Let's call the Johnson City Council Work Session number 24-01 to order. Sam, roll call please.
Martin.
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
Cope.
Here.
Ready.
Evans.
Here.
We have five items on the agenda this evening and they all relate to the budget. They are the budget requests from the outside organizations and we will start with the Johnson Economic Development Corporation.
Okay, is that better? Greetings, everyone. I think I know everyone in attendance tonight, but my name's Grant Taylor. I'm the president of the Johnson Economic Development Corporation Board this year as well as last year. Also a member and partner at the Hanson Company, a local business here in Johnston.
And I'm Jennifer Sayers, the executive director of Jedco. Thanks for having us.
So I recall about a year ago, we were standing up here and Jennifer was, you know, very, very new. And we were really trying to right the ship and pull Jedco back together again and get everybody on board. And I feel like we were very successful in that. Jennifer and I both together and independently had a lot of meetings with various previous members, current members, and then people that weren't members at all. And I'm happy to report that we've grown our membership probably to the highest levels in Jedco history. So that's probably a good springboard into where we're going in 2024. City staff and leadership have significantly increased their participation and communication with Jedco, which has allowed all of us to be a stronger team. And part of that, through that, we provide what I think has been very high-quality programming and events. And we want to continue to do that, which is why we're here to ask for the $30,000 grant from the city to help fund our organization.
Thanks. Yeah, it's been quite a year. I feel like I finally got everything, got through everything and got it all under my belt and have learned the ropes. So we are out of the gates for 2024 and we've already got the annual meeting set up. Thank you to those of you here who will be speaking at that event. That will be February 13 at Hyperion, 4 to 7 p.m. And our annual development forum, which again will be held at Corteva on May 1st, May Day, from 3 to 6 p.m. So we are also working on a joint meeting with the Chamber in experiencing our retreat and some other planning events and board meetings. We are taking on the idea of working a lot more with the Chamber this year. We did the bus tour and that went really well. And so now we're going to try like a lunch and learn type thing, maybe a couple of those this year. Joint programs that will be of benefit to all of our members. So be watching your inboxes for those to come.
Thanks, Jennifer. Yeah, some of those programs which came out of conversations with the city that you've asked us to explore and provide as a benefit to the community and the businesses within Johnston include subjects like workforce development, succession planning, entrepreneurial resource panel, possibly a developer roundtable, zoning code update, city incentives and TIF and other topics like that. So that's a whole brand-new initiative for Jedco and something that we're excited to explore further in 2024.
Some of these suggestions have come from my meetings with members and prospective members in the community, especially things like zoning code updates. That was a new thing this year and for the city of Johnston. And so people are asking questions about that and where they could potentially develop certain projects. So I think there's a lot of interest, especially now that utilities are going in out on Highway 141 and a lot of people are asking questions and wanting to know what's going on. So I think that's great. Developer roundtables, some people have suggested that that might be fun. Some brainstorming suggestion with other developers on what types of projects we could do here in Johnston. So all really good.
Yeah. So on behalf of the Jedco Board of Directors, thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working together with the city of Johnston in 2024.
Council, any questions?
So great you had mentioned new membership numbers and kind of a record. What is your membership numbers at this point?
We're just about right at 40.
Okay, cool.
Add three new members, join reset. With prospects and invite them to our meetings and there's a lot of interest in Johnston.
Yeah, you know, all of our invoices are out for 2024. So, you know, most of the renewals haven't happened yet.
Sure, right.
We're not anticipating anybody not renewing. We haven't gotten any feedback to lead us to believe that. Feedbacks always has been really positive. So and our board is solidified. Each and every board member that has been on the board in previous years wanted to come back. Make sure and check in with those folks and make sure that their attendance is solid and that they want to be a part of this and resoundingly, everybody was. So feel really good about the organization.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, having an opportunity as the ad hoc, one of the ad hoc members of the council to participate in the strategic planning session, I was really impressed by the engagement of the board members.
Lots of great input from that meeting.
Jennifer, maybe I should know this because I do attend your meetings, but you mentioned we currently have 40 members. Do we have goals for what we want to increase that number to this year?
Gosh, I mean, I would love to see us get to 100. I don't know if we could do that, you know, in one year, but I think that might be a nice number to shoot for. I've got about 400 prospects and members on my invite list, my contact list. So and getting invitations to media groups. I've met with several organizations, broker dealers who want to know more about getting involved in doing things in Johnston. Some of them have projects or land in Johnston and they'd like to know more about what the city might want to see there and those types of questions. So it's just popping all the time.
I've probably been less focused on numbers of investors and members, you know, coming out of COVID and then the strategic planning exercise and not having the executive director for almost a year and bringing Jennifer on board. More than anything, we just wanted to right the ship, make sure we were financially stable. That's what we spent a lot of time last year, calling on members, recruiting new members. I feel really good about our balance sheet and where things are at financially. And then moving into this year, it was more about, okay, how do we bring, how do we bring more value to the city and to the businesses? So we've got those kind of three major events that we mentioned, the annual meeting, the development forum and the bus tour. And then the conversation was, what else can we do? And that's when we started to explore these lunch and learns and trying to be a venue where, kind of like we've discussed, where the small businesses in Johnston can learn, grow and take advantage of the, of all the different seminars and educational forums that we can provide. I think the city will probably continue to do the major economic development in terms of recruiting new businesses and finding, you know, companies that might want to relocate to Johnston, how to incentivize that. We want to do our part, you know, focused on how do we grow the businesses and keep them from leaving, make sure that we help you retain the businesses. So just from a goals perspective, it's probably been less about member numbers and more about adding value to the whole.
I think that's a really good point, Grant. And I do think that was a good discussion we had at the strategic planning session. That Jedco shouldn't be all things to all people, right? The focus on development and economic development and commercial development is really its primary mission. And so that's probably, members who have an interest in those issues are the types of folks who should be drawn to it. And so I think keeping that focus is really important.
Other questions for Brad or Jennifer?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next will be the Johnson Chamber of Commerce. Like your t-shirt.
Still have them for sale if anybody needs one. I'm Samantha Weinberger, I'm the executive director of the Johnston Chamber of Commerce. Sharon Vickery is our new incoming president and I believe she's online. And I don't know if she wants to say a few words or she wants me to take the lead. So, sorry, I've only been here once and this is her first time too, so.
We don't bite.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll start off by a few things and if she wants to pipe in, we will definitely let her introduce herself. So, once again, Samantha Weinberger, executive director of the Johnston Chamber of Commerce, coming up on my second year in about a month. So, no many of you, so thank you for allowing us to speak tonight and good to see you and I hope everybody had a good holiday. We sent in our request and so we have a few things that are happening in 2024 as we continue to grow the Chamber and kind of, as many of you know, kind of get the Chamber to go on a new path. The Chamber's been kind of on a, I think, a reset before I came on and just kind of doing similar things. And so we're really trying to focus on how can we keep the tradition of the Chamber and the Johnston community, but as well as make things more exciting for our members and the community and continue to grow. And kind of like Jennifer and Grant were saying with their members, make sure that our current members are getting their benefit and having an impact on those businesses. One of the things that we're really excited about 2024 is we did renew our mission statement. So Chamber's mission statement is now encourage, engage and advocate for our members resulting in a vibrant community. So we're happy to introduce that. We continue to increase our membership. We added 42 new members in 2023. That's put us to a total member of 217 organizations with over 500 contacts in total. So we do stay very busy reaching our members. And we continue to grow our member success by creating different workshops, meaningful network activities and our lunch and learn events. We're also going to be conducting a survey here in January to go out to our membership to ask them what they want. What are some things that they're seeing that they like? What are some things that they don't care about? And what is it that they want to see from the Chamber to feel like they're getting their benefit? Let's see if she raises a hand. I want to make sure she.
Hello.
Oh.
Hi Sharon. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize first of all for not being there in person. There was just some confusion totally on my part as to whether this was a totally Zoom meeting or if it was an in-person meeting. But first of all, I just want to say Samantha has done an excellent job as our executive director the past 12-plus months. So kudos to her for helping us grow and prosper. I love our new mission statement. We have a new website that's launching next month. So our communications are really going to be enhanced. November, we had a board assessment, which I don't know that we've ever had before. We want to grow. We want to work more efficiently and effectively. And so we know that we need to kind of change how we're going about doing business to make that happen. December, we had an awesome board retreat that was facilitated by one of our board members. She did a wonderful job and that really helped substantiate where should we focus our energies going forward. What I would just like to say is that, you know, the city has done an awesome job as well as Jedco on, you know, making Johnston a wonderful place to live and grow and thrive. We want to continue to contribute more and more to that. So, you know, to do that, we really need your support. So our ask is, and Samantha, I don't know if you wanted to do this or if you want me to do this, but.
They have it, so.
Okay, I will let you do the ask then for that. But I did just want to say that I'm very excited to be president this year. Excited to work with Samantha, closer with Jedco, closer with the city. And I just think it's going to be a good, a good year of growth and change.
Thanks Sharon. Couple of things I'll add, she kind of touched a point. The logo and website should be done here, hopefully by the end of the month. So we will be rebranding with a brand-new logo and website. Some of our hope with that and some of the events and stuff and the communications that we're really trying to focus on is how do we also attract younger generation? So a lot of people even my age don't understand. I say, I work for a Chamber of Commerce and they're like, what's that? What do you do? So we're really trying to spread our events and branch out to try to attract them to not only be involved in the Chamber, but also the community and other community organizations and understand the importance of getting involved. So we're really excited about those things that'll be happening. The other thing I want to touch base on is I feel like, like many organizations, we struggle with volunteers. So we are also looking at different ways of attracting more volunteers and ambassadors for our organization to help out at events, to kind of be our go-getters for the Chamber. And Greater Des Moines Partnership actually put out a survey earlier this year on volunteerism. And one of the main things I took from that is people like stuff. So volunteers, you know, whether it's a discount or some kind of gift or incentive. So we're looking at different ways of doing that as well. Other than that, I think Sharon mentioned it all. So this time I'll take any questions.
Council, any questions for Sam?
Mayor, I do. Are there specific things that you can attribute as to why the increase in funding and the increase in your request this time around? Are there, are you seeing greater expenses in certain areas that you have, things along those lines? Or is there a targeted project specifically that this money would go to help serve?
Yeah, so some of this is kind of retrospective as far as launching the new website. That will go into our whole new Chamber website as well as the Johnston Green Days website we're redoing along with both of those logos. So we did take that out of our budget last year, but we were hoping that the increase would help us recover some of those costs that we spent for that as well as being able to put on some of these new programs. We are finding out things as simple as, you know, I talk about the younger generation and trying to kick off like our young professionals group and grow that. And things as simple as like, hey, can we have a social hour at your restaurant? And now they want, well, you can, but it's a minimum or you must pay a fee and things like, you know, that used to be, sure, we'll just reserve a few tables. Now it's, well, you must pay $75 an hour or there's a minimum food requirement. So things just aren't as easy financially. And then we are just, we do feel like we'd be able to contribute more. So as well as partnering with Jedco, such as on the bus tour and things like that, being able to contribute more as well as putting on some more events and things at Green Days and being able to do a little bit more. And then also being able to spend on incentivizing those volunteers. A lot of that has been due to budgets. We just don't really have it or budget for it. So it's kind of hard to, hey, come help us. But so yeah, that's a big reason for our increase in our ask. Eventually too, we have been talking about locating, whether that is something that we do in partnership with Jedco or just look for a different office space. Me personally would love to have some kind of actual office space where we could host our own business before or chamber chats and things like that. Because then we wouldn't have the extra expense of having to rent space for our members.
Thank you.
I have a question. Your survey, it sounds like you're going to do this survey and you're going to quiz or poll your respondents about what they want to get out of the Chamber. We have a few streetscaping kind of projects that are in our planning. One of them being revitalizing Merle High Road in terms of a streetscape. So I'd be interested if there were in your survey, and I don't know, maybe that's not the appropriate place, but questions like what could the city do for, for the Chamber of Commerce in terms of, is there specific needs in terms of traffic or presentation, looks? We have, you know, we have had several companies come to us with car wash ideas, you know, like, I guess I'd like to know what the business community thinks that the city should be doing in terms of driving some of this. And I don't know if that's under economic development, but I'm kind of, the economic development groups, they only have 40-some people and this is a couple hundred. I'm kind of like thinking about how do we, how do we talk to each other a little bit more?
Yeah, and you know, we do have a couple hundred, but I think one of the issues we're seeing is kind of like Grant was saying. We do want to continue to increase our numbers. But one of our main focuses in 2024 is also that retention. We're getting members that join, they do their ribbon cutting, they come to a couple of things and then we notice that they just fall off. They don't contribute, they don't come to events, they don't reply to questions or surveys and things like that. And so one of our focuses is going to be putting out the survey to say, what is it that you want to see? So we make sure we're spending time and energy on things that actually matter and have an impact for our members as well as being able to hopefully retain those members. So we can definitely think about putting something in there. I do, I will say, I feel like that might be more of a Jedco or city thing. And Jennifer and I talk about this a lot as we talk about partnering on making sure of, you know, we want to partner where it makes sense, but we also want to make sure that each organization is focusing on what they need to focus on for their specific members and that we're not kind of crossing paths or crossing into each other's lanes.
I get it.
But that's something that we can definitely review. So one of our board members, Elizabeth Van Gundy, she works at John Deere Financial, has actually reached out to, I believe he's a data analyst that she works with. And so he's helping us put together the survey and not just putting together questions, but also he will be helping us analyze answers and data from that survey. So I'm really excited about that.
And I think, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but I think that's a really good question that the city councilwoman brought up is that anything that we do uncover in that survey, we absolutely, that we think would be appropriate to share with the city and to share with Jedco. You know, we all have different goals and objectives and kind of swim lanes, if you will, but we definitely feel that we're a team. And so anything we can do to help each other out, we completely embrace.
One of the things I would interact with or just put out there is we do both a community survey and a business survey every two years. So this spring, we'll actually be doing a business survey. We partner with a national firm that does survey work. And, you know, so you may want to talk with Janet, get a copy of the questions. We also can add questions to our survey. So the one thing, this would be a scientific, accurate survey from that perspective. And so maybe there's some partnering we can do on that and it actually saves some like work on your behalf.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely.
It's just a thought.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
Any other questions, Congress?
I would just add, I've noticed a couple, last couple ribbon cuttings and maybe they were at restaurants and so maybe that's why it drew a larger crowd. But I see like we've had a really nice, good turnout as of late and so that's good to see.
Yeah, it's been great. I think, you know, I know last year we implemented a new membership system, hoping that that would help with communications and things like that. And we're hoping with a new website and the logo, you know, I mean, a website's your first impression these days. So people, visitors, people looking to come to the community, especially with the big projects we have that we're hoping will bring in people from the outside community. You know, when they Google it, will it be attractive? Will it be easy for them to use? Find out information, find out events. We also worked really hard to get our event to interact with the Greater Des Moines Partnership calendar. So all of our events are able to be added to their calendar as well. So also kind of being able to branch out to surrounding communities.
Any other questions? Thank you, Samantha.
All right, thanks, guys.
Next, we have the Johnson Community School, Community Education.
Hello.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, I'm actually feeling fortunate that Community School District starts with a C and that puts me at the beginning of the agenda. This is great. My name is Scott Krutoff. I'm the director of the Community Education Department. I think I've met most of you, so thank you for the time. Thank you for considering our funder request again this year. And honestly, thank you for, it's 33, going on 34 years of the city supporting community education through the school district. And I think I said it a couple of years ago, but that's just a long time for any agreement, any partnership to be in place. So super generous, super grateful and just appreciate the continued support for community ed and the school district. So I've got a few comments, remarks to share. I'm going to be honest with you, I came up two years ago and had like 25 minutes of comments for you and I realized that was not the way to play this. So I did not do that this year. I've got a few comments for you, but if I don't share the information that you're looking for or if you have questions, I am more than willing to answer any questions that you have about community ed when we're done. So, community education, I'm sure, just like, just like you guys, I spent time with my in-laws and extended family over Christmas. I have been an employee of the Johnston School District for coming up on six years and in the Community Education Department the whole time. And I realized over the holidays that most of my extended family think that I am a teacher. They hear Johnston School District, they think Scott must be a teacher, he must have his summers off and that's the end of the conversation. That is, is not the case. I feel like I did a lot of re-education or sharing about what I do, I guess, over the holidays. So I guess I want to share that. I'm going to give you my, my in-law's spiel so that you know, it'd be my city council spiel. So, community education is not unique to Johnston. If you look around the metro area, most of the larger school districts have a community education department. Personally, I live in Indianola and I know that our school district is looking at adding a community education department. Community education is unique to the school district or to the community in which it serves, mostly because all the departments are funded differently. Their funding leads to their structure and then their structure kind of dictates what sort of services they're providing in their community. So our community ed is going to look different than West Des Moines or than Ankeny's because we all have a slightly different funding structure, I guess. So all slightly different, but there is a common thread in that we all believe that public schools are uniquely positioned to be community centers and to serve the community. So public schools are already these facilities, they're a facility resource that already exists. We don't have to go build them or rent them or find them. They already exist within neighborhoods, so they're where the people are. And then people have a built-in sense of trust or ownership or belonging or everybody feels welcome at a school. I don't have to go out and develop those things as if I had, if I built a new facility, then I got to build trust within the community and things like that. So I fully recognize that we have a leg up in having this affiliation with the school district and that the schools are a unique place to offer programming through them. That's kind of the common thread among the community education departments. For us in Johnston, what makes us unique or different? We are a department of the school district. We're an enterprise fund within the school district. So we are responsible for generating revenue to cover all of our expenses. We don't get subsidy from the general fund in like a direct operating way. So that's where the support from the city has come in and been so important for us. The city in the 2080 agreement, the city supports one-third of our admin expense. So that's that much less that we have to generate through swim lessons or after-school chess club or summer camp or kind of fill-in-the-blank program. That's how we use the city funding. Our programming, normally I would have you sort of refer to your course catalog. This season, we did decide to go digital only for our winter/spring catalog. Yes, I am sweating it a little bit. It's our first ever just digital one, so I hope that you've seen it in your inbox. I hope that you've seen it on social media. I kind of hope that Janet sent it to you for me, but if not, I am more than happy to send those to you so that you can help share the good word of community ed and kind of see what we have going on. But our programming kind of falls into four different buckets. We've got aquatics programs, preschool and childcare. So aquatics is Summit Middle School. We operate the pool end of that building, just like all the other school district facilities. They are, they are classrooms first, they're an athletics facility second, and then we get the opportunity to program kind of whatever space is left, which usually means right now and on the weekends. So at the pool, we are trying to put as many kids in those lanes as possible when the pool's available to us. Outside of the pool is where we're running our other programs. So we have, we have access to gymnasiums and auditoriums and art rooms. So the variety of programs that we can do, there's not a lot of limits to it. We're really limited by where can we find a great instructor to deliver that thing. So beekeeping classes, this spring, we have a master gardener coming in and teaching a class about Monet, the artist, and what that has to do with gardening. Not 100% sure, but I think it's going to be an interesting class. We have a ton of pickleball players, thanks to a lot of support from John and Nate and Parks and Rec. We've got 600 kids playing basketball on Saturday mornings. Mid-December, a lot of people don't know that we host a Lego robotics program. In December, we held a regional qualifier where we had eight Johnston teams and 20 teams from mostly the metro area. We had a team from Cedar Rapids, we had a team from Iowa Falls. They all come in to Summit Middle School for a day, show off their robots and what they can do. Very cool event. Next time I'll, I'll try to get an invite out to you. But I think that's a cool event that, that we put on that not a lot of people are aware of. Where are we at? Aquatics programs, preschool, Johnston. Aquatics programs, preschool, Johnston Early Learning Academy is on the, that'd be the west end of Wallace Elementary. It houses two, three, and four-year-old preschool for the school district. Four-year-olds is part of the K through twelve preschool for everybody, public school. Two and three is not. Two and three is a fee-for-service, those parents pay tuition, and that's a community education program. Those are community education teachers, our curriculum. That's one of the programs that we operate. We have a hundred and three-year-olds in preschool right now. And I'd venture to say that I'm very proud of the preschool that we offer. I, I think that we offer a really high-quality program led by, you know, qualified instructors instead of like a willing parent or something like that. So I'm, I'm really proud of the, the preschool that we're able to offer. And then KTC, if you've been, if you're a parent in Johnston, you're at least aware of KTC. It stands for Kids Teen Connection, but we're serving six hundred kids-ish in before and after-school care right now. So a hundred and twenty spread over five elementary schools that see us either before school, after school, or both. And that's, it's by far and away, that's our largest program, see the most number of kids on a daily basis. So I'm proud of it. Like, I, I really, I obviously feel good about what we're providing. I hope that you guys see a value and see community ed as an investment and see a return and a value being delivered to the Johnston community for that. Our request for the current fiscal year is eighty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I think you have our, our request packet and a digital version of the course catalog. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you have.
Council, any questions for Scott?
Mayor, I have one question. Scott, this is the first time I, it just kind of dawned on me right now, especially when you started talking about that, that early age preschool at the two or three. Is there any kind of scholarships or subsidies for those families that qualify that would perhaps need added need or, you know, have added financial needs?
Uh, yeah, so there used to be, there is funding from the United Way, and it's not called that, but ultimately it comes from the United Way. And that funding years ago, I don't know, five years ago, could almost all be used for scholarships, and we, and we used it, right? Over time, we have changed, or the, the rules have changed with that grant money on what we can use it for. And now we are phasing out being able to use any of it for financial assistance, and it's all going towards, there's a new community outreach position with that fund. So it's specifically talking to families that are involved in preschool to make sure that they're successful. So we are not receiving as much outside support to be able to provide scholarships, but we're still not turning kids away whenever we have the chance. Usually, if we're offering financial assistance and we do it the same way through preschool as we do for youth basketball on a Saturday morning, as for summer camps, if there's any way that we can get a kid in, we're going to do it. It's just basically money we're choosing not to collect as opposed to being subsidized by an outside source.
Is it safe to say then you haven't had to turn away kids because of financial need?
Um, I couldn't say that a hundred percent. Like, so because we know, because we're not being subsidized and because there's a real expense with our programs, we try to, in most cases, limit our support to fifty percent on a program, and there are families that have said, no, like, I can't, I can't go fifty-fifty with you on fill-in-the-blank programs.
Okay.
We have turned people away.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Scott?
Well, Scott, I had not looked at your digital catalog yet, and I'm sitting here looking at it now, because as you know, I like to take advantage of your, of your classes. So the Monet one, gardening, that, that sounds very interesting. So you'll probably see me there.
Good.
And my bees are doing well. Any other questions? Thanks, Scott.
Greater Des Moines Partnership.
Thanks for having me. I'm Tiffany Taucheck, and I'm the President and CEO of the Greater Des Moines Partnership. Very much appreciate Mayor, members of City Council, and staff for your time tonight and your continued investment in the Greater Des Moines Partnership. As you know, we are the regional economic development and community development organization. We work closely with you, your team, Jedco, as well as the Johnston Chamber of Commerce. We represent eleven counties throughout the region, and that includes four hundred different investors, as well as sixty-five hundred members and twenty-three affiliate chambers of commerce. So we provided in advance a packet. I'm not going to spend time going through that whole packet, but happy to answer questions. Just wanted to lift up a few of the key stats for you tonight, and again, happy to answer any questions. But happy to report that in 2023, we did surpass our economic development project goals in terms of thirty-one new and expanding projects with a capital investment of two billion dollars for the region in one year, as well as exceeding our goal for project lead generation with ninety-four new leads in, in 2023. We also launched a new DSM RFI-ready program, worked with regional partners to help showcase development-ready sites throughout the region. We already have sixteen sites noted on that website, and it allows us another way to help market the region on a national basis. We also conducted multiple marketing trips and trade shows to help promote the region overall to our target markets, and continued a national digital marketing campaign targeting individuals who would have the propensity to move into our communities. As you all know, we also worked closely with you, your team, on getting the word out about the DSM International Airport Project. We were very pleased to see that Polk County voters did support that bond referendum, that three-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bond referendum, to help fund part of the Des Moines International Airport's terminal project. And then there are a number of other projects that we worked on, including placemaking projects, where Johnston really played a leading role in, over the years, including the, the Icon Water Trails, where we got to see our own mayor in, in the water, on the water. But just overall, very much appreciate all that you are doing for the region, the fantastic development and continued commitment that you are demonstrating, certainly to your residents, but also just to the community overall. Happy to answer questions.
Council, any questions?
Mayor, I have had nearly a question for everybody. Sorry, Grant and Jennifer. One of your scorecard goals is BRE specifically. Do you offer or have a structure in place to help kind of mentor or guide or even provide BRE education for those affiliates so that they could continue that with perhaps some smaller enterprises?
Very much appreciate the question, and I want to call out, we have Stacy Levon, it's okay, I can handle it, but Stacy Levon, who leads our economic development work, she's, she's here with me tonight in a, in a show of support and again, appreciation to all of you. Stacy and her team do handle all of those BRE calls in conjunction with our different economic development partners and municipalities. But one of the things we've been looking at for 2024 is really leaning into some of that work and helping provide some additional coaching, training, mentorship. That is something that we've heard. We've done an eleven-county listening tour, given I'm new in my role of President and CEO, and one of the things that we've heard from many of the communities that we represent is that they do, they do want to be better connected and have additional relationship-building opportunities. So we believe we're well-suited to help convene and connect those leaders.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Other questions, Council? Well, thank you for being here.
Very much, very much appreciate it.
And last but not least, the Johnson Partnership.
Here, City Council, happy 2024. Thanks for inviting us to be back here again. First, I want to start, I think it just came out this afternoon, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight miles?
Isn't that incredible?
I think it's more incredible that you're going to run it. Somebody did some math, one of our board members back here. I can't remember the number, but that's a lot of miles.
That's a lot of miles, but that's a lot of giving from our, from the people in our community.
It is, it's fantastic. And that is how we are able to do what we do. So that just fits into, dovetails into this whole thing. I, I know that the presentation a little bit, kind of talks a little bit about how, unfortunately, we're a broken record about breaking records right now, and unfortunately, our numbers keep going in the wrong direction. I talk all the time about how I'd love to be put out of business, but that's not the reality right now. We can do what we do because we have this incredible support from the city, from the community, and not going to rehash, I can do numbers a thousand ways to tell you how it's not been great. We had another record-breaking month in December. I don't know what 2024 is going to look like, but just like the city has to make all these tough choices about how to spend money, that's where a lot of people are coming and finding us because they're trying to make tough choices about how they're going to feed their family, pay their bills, make those things work out. So that's why they come and find us, and I'm glad they can, and we just plan to be there for whenever they come. So I will let you guys, I will keep it short, sweet. If there's anything that you want to add, I can, or ask about, I can provide all kinds of information. We, unfortunately, everything is going up and in the wrong direction, but we're keeping up. So far, so good.
Council, any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm ready.
You're on a roll.
I don't know about that. Andrea, in the last couple of weeks, I know that there has been a lot of news over the proposal or lack, I guess, of, that the state is going to do some of that early child and, and family-based nutrition programs coming up. At least that's proposed. Has the partner, I guess the first question is, I presume that will impact the partnership, but what is the partnership beginning to do to try to mitigate the effects then that they're going to feel?
So we have, yeah, anytime we see a cut in any kind of benefit, we see almost a direct correlation in services. So August was our record-breaking month this year, which is unheard of. We never have August, but that was the end of summer, and that was when parents are struggling to try to figure out how to keep feeding those kids until school starts. So when I heard that we're not going to be applying for those funds, that instantly makes us. So we continue to do our weekend food support to the school district. That is a huge portion of what we do. We actually did almost a thousand bags in the month of December, which is also, we do usually somewhere between three and four thousand bags a year. So to do almost a thousand in a month was kind of, but that shows that families are connected and they know. We continue to help and support with any school summer lunch programs to be able to. I imagine those are going to expand, so there's going to be renewed conversations about how we can figure out how to fit into that and be a part of that, because I know that it's going to be a lot tougher this summer for a lot of our families when kiddos are home, if they don't have that extra money coming in, when, I mean, they're, they're usually in school for two meals a day, so when they're home for every meal, yeah, they go through quite a bit, so.
Will this added need or pressure that, that you anticipate on the partnership require additional volunteer support?
Oh, definitely. It makes everything our capacity. We've actually spent the past month and a half widening a door, where our truck has been outfitted to be able to fit more food, to move more food in and out. We're doing twelve thousand pounds a week right now, which is unheard, I can't even imagine, I can't believe I'm saying that, because when I started, it was somewhere around two thousand. So we're, we're just getting ready for what that means and how that's going to look, staff, we've been having conversations as a staff and with our volunteers to make sure, because it's gotten harder, it's gotten more stressful. We're trying to make sure we take those breaks, because volunteers aren't getting paid. We want to make sure that they're not overextending themselves, but we're also trying to cast that net a little wider to make sure we spread that around a little bit more, because we can't do it without volunteers, but many hands do make for light work. So yes, it's going to require a lot more, all kinds of operational needs in that regard.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you, Andrea.
Thank you all very much.
You bet. Thank you for what you do. Well, with that, we have gotten through the agenda. I see the Superintendent of Schools walked in. Do you have anything you want to share with us this evening?
Well, we are starting back today. We have our teachers, the special development, and they're back from the fun and action part. Parents, I think, might be happy too. I'd love to have them home, but they seem to love to give them back.
That's right, that's right. But you're all rested and ready for them, right?
Yeah, everybody is decorated for a new year.
Very good, good. Good to see you here this evening. Well, with that, is there anything, let's see, is there anything on the regular agenda that we can cover? City Administrator comments?
I don't have any comments. I don't know if there's any staff comments this evening.
Well, why don't we do the round of City Council comments? Do we have anything? Councilman Evans?
Happy New Year.
Councilman Cole?
Ditto.
Councilman Burkard?
The only thing that I was going to add at the, excuse me, conclusion of our meeting is, if, if you haven't been lately, I'd encourage you to visit the DMARC, or Des Moines Area Religious Council Food Pantry website. You can now, are empowered to be able to do a lot of metrics yourself. There is so much informatics and so much data that they collect and have to collect as part of their program. And the reason I emphasize that organization is because they are a lead food provider for the partnership. What's interesting about all of that need, and I know we've heard at different points in time about folks outside of Johnston utilizing the partnership, but what this information dashboard allows you to do is really hone in on who's using the partnership, but also where folks who reside in Johnston are actually getting their food. I hate to say it's fun for a nerd like me, it is fun to see that data. It's also realistically saddening as to how many folks within our community rely on that food assistance. And so I, I implore each of you to make sure you know how the partnership is really serving and who they're serving, because it actually impacts the greater good, just like all of the different applicants that are here before us today. And I just appreciate all of them and all the services they provide. So thank you. Together, we make a community.
Come on, Martin.
I just wanted to say that I was going through my emails, because, you know, they pile up over the holidays, and I noticed I had one from Colleen Itis from Summit about ELP humanities, students doing a community showcase. It's this Friday. I don't know if anyone else on the council or staff is going. I can't go because I'll be at work, but it does look pretty interesting. And if you don't recall seeing it, I can forward it on to you.
Could you please forward that to me? I'm not sure that I saw.
Yeah, I don't think I got it in there. That'd be great.
I think I went last year and it was, it was a good program. Anything else, Councilwoman Martin?
No, thank you.
I just want to mention again, I think Andrea will be back in February and we'll be presenting a big check to her at that time. Again, it's a result of all of the donations that members of our community, as well as members beyond our community, contributed during the month of December so that they could see me run every day next year, almost up until Chris, well, probably up until the middle of September, but, you know, just what a, what a generous, what a generous community that we have. Over twenty-three, over twenty-three thousand dollars in the month of December, which means that I will be running twenty-three hundred miles sometime next year. But we'll, we'll celebrate that more in a couple of weeks. So again, thanks to everybody in our community for stepping up to the plate and, and being so generous during our holiday, holiday season. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we will adjourn and come back for the regular meeting in about five minutes. Thank you all.